I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our meeting. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Are we waiting for a line?
She disappeared. I can...
It was Jerry Carroll.
Got it. That was for the consent, right?
Yep.
For appointments, first grade, grade one, and this kind of goes with 6A but due to our enrollment, which we were eight over at our last meeting, we're now 10 over as of today, so those numbers are just going up. So I'm recommending, you just approved Christine Kraus for Fort Barton, grade one, Tiberian Middle School, cross-country, Steven Schreiner, High School Color Guard Advisor, Denise Parry, High School Cheerleading Advisors, Sue McDermott and Kristen McDermott, and Ranger School RTI Coordinator, Denise LaFave. Resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, Gail Burbrique, who left us to go to our neighbor in Portsmouth. Our next retirement is our, the employee who's been here the longest, Lexi first started in April of 1970 and put in a retire, notice that she was retiring, so we will certainly miss her and with her a lot of history within the community, our school community. David Gerard, High School Social Studies and School Base Coordinator, Marty Kortner.
So Mr. Merrick will advertise for the School Base Coordinator?
Yes.
And I'd like to thank Gail.
The School Base, for folks that don't know, the School Base Coordinator is paid with a Perkins Grant, which is a federal grant, which we get through our participation through the Career Center in Newport at the Volk School. And that's been paying for a two-fifths position probably for the last 10 years for a school-to-career position.
And I'd like to thank Gail and of course Lexi for all the children they've helped while we're here. Amazing. We'll miss them. Okay?
I'd like to make a motion to move up item 6A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Hi.
6A, thank you for coming again. We're being very transparent.
Good evening. Just an update on the sewer project. We were making the connection from the middle school pumping station today, so that should be energized tomorrow. The high school, the pumps, the control panel, that's all completed. We were pressure testing those lines today. We'll continue to do that tomorrow, and we plan on having that energized as well tomorrow. So we should be fully operational. We've got a lot of cleanup to do, but they've been concentrating on making sure that we, that the sewer can be conveyed to the bottom of the sand filter.
I didn't notice, but have the big mounds in the parking lot, are those still there? I didn't notice.
They're getting smaller and smaller.
But we don't anticipate an issue with parking.
No, that, no.
Okay. I'll see what I can do about trying to get those either removed or reduced.
It should because the parking lot's never full even when we have school. The seniors like to park back there, but that doesn't mean we don't have the seat.
Well, a lot of the seniors don't turn, they don't start driving, it seems like until halfway through the year anyway, so it shouldn't be an issue.
It's been parked for a while until we get the spots taken care of based on personal for sure. It would hurt the information.
But having those mounds there isn't a problem.
I don't see the knock. I was going to say.
Okay. What we'll try and do is keep the contractor and his equipment out of those areas while school's in session, so we're not intermixed with the students in the parking.
Have you briefly covered the contingency plan in case something doesn't go wrong tomorrow?
We had, the tanks that we installed, we have several days of capacity in each of those tanks, so if for some reason something happens and we can't be online tomorrow, we will have two days of storage left within the tanks. We will also have a pumping contractor online, so that if we need to, we will pump the sewage, and that way we're not having any violations, any overflows, any problems in that respect.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for coming again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No correspondents?
No. No. Okay, policies, Mr. Merrick?
Yes, for the first policy before the committee is policy, revised policy 426 regarding individual school policy manuals. And again, there were no changes made to this after our last meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Next.
The second policy is approval of textbooks, 520.
This does not include the changes we made at our last meeting.
Okay, that's...
Under number five, we had changed it to select the top two or three for a wider review, and number six, we had to eliminate the sentence fragment, and so it should read, "Input is requested from additional teachers of the grade," and then S in parentheses, "and/or content, and from building principles, period." Then we delete everything up to the next period, and the final sentence in six remains the same.
We can make that change. Well, you already made it. It shouldn't have been made the last time.
Right. I'll approve the policy 520 as amended.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor? Okay.
The next policy is policy 1142. There was an error on my part and my office's part. We sent out the first, what you received in your packet was a list of recommendations that Sally and Diane put together after the meeting based on our conversation. However, what was approved wasn't that. It was what I sent you over the weekend, and I gave you clean, all clean copies of policy 1142, which all the changes were on pages 10 and 11 that were talked about. If the committee would like, you have the other, what was discussed that Mrs. Black and Mrs. Santa worked on. I don't know what the pleasure of the committee is if you want to consider those changes, or do you just want to, does the committee just want to accept the clean copy with the changes that were just made to pages 10 and 11?
So the clean copy we have is in this folder?
No, what was, I haven't. I emailed it to you and it's on the, it's right on the, it's under all the other stuff.
So the clean copy just took out all of the...
It took out all the brand name things?
The brand naming and then it removed the...
Paragraph that was contradictory.
The other school-sponsored events section.
On page 10.
That was on page 10.
Yeah.
And then the Triscuit language and things like that, anything that was commercially based.
Well, I'm, I think Dr. Herman and Dr. Larkin made some valid arguments for keeping the stuff that got struck in, so I'm perfectly fine leaving it as it was, but if they've had a reconsideration, I'm fine changing it. How's that?
It's accommodated.
Perfect political answer.
Is there any member of the committee who would prefer incorporating the changes that were proposed after our meeting?
They're the ones in, the easy way to, is they're in yellow.
They're in yellow?
They're in the document that has the yellow, which is in your packing, which was originally in your packing.
Well, I will be completely politically incorrect to balance Mrs. Palash's statement, and if this whole section of suggestions, healthy snack suggestions remains, I will vote against the whole policy, even so I am all pro providing healthy food and caring about the physical and health wellness of the children, but I'm completely against a school policy being some kind of advisory document in terms of what fruits and vegetables are and what kind of snacks is supposed to be supplied versus not supplied, and this can, as I said before, this can be dealt with by a little handout given by a nurse to all the kids and parents, and policy is something which can be, has to be enforced, and anything which is advisory is not enforceable, so what are we writing here? Essay on health and wellness, and it's all against what policy is. It just diminishes the weight of other policies. Because at the same time, we should have, in terms of bullying, we should have a section which basically lists all forms of bullying, which we suggest or we recognize that these are different forms of bullying, and it's just...
Mrs. Santa and Mrs. Black, I understand you were following very exact guidelines when you originally crafted our policy, and that's what led you to include that language. Do you want to address that at all?
Yeah, after listening to the conversation last time, I feel that it could be removed from the policy and just be provided as a separate document, and within the criteria that we were looking at and the rating group that we were given, it does fall for giving suggestions to students and others, however, maybe needing that, it could be a separate document, but it's used by the schools, by teachers, principals, and so on to share with families, so I don't know if that would be included in the policy.
Okay, so, and was there some other organization that had to approve this? Or that you, you said there was a rubric and you had to meet?
It was part of our involvement in a violated initiative to support schools and developing health and wellness policies that we threatened changes in regulations, and so we gave this kind of small rubric here, we could see what areas we were at, we were doing well with our previous policy, and what areas we needed to include, and this is one of the areas that we can kind of address.
The suggestions. So the state tells us we need to or should provide suggestions, but they do not have to be in the policy?
Have to be in the policy.
We just should provide them to parents in some format?
There is flexibility in how we address the requirements, so what their needs and if we have overall score for the policy, if I'm able to determine what is supposed to be addressed, so I'm sure that, given that we're referencing it in the policy, we want it as a separate document.
And where is the separate document?
That would begin on page nine.
It says, "Remove from policy and issue a separate document," but it doesn't have reference to a separate document?
It does, and then it said that we had taken that out if we were going...
They're proposing that everything from that point on would be a separate handout that would be given out of schools.
On page, on page four of nine.
Right.
Deb, page four of nine.
So the policy would go up through, everything in blue above healthy snack suggestions.
See, on page four of nine?
Which four of nine? We have two different...
The one with the, the one with the...
Not the clean copy.
The one in our book.
Yeah, with the yellow copy. And it says, "Recommendations for healthy food choices are provided in the attached healthy snack suggestions."
But here it says it in yellow.
So we take that out so there's no reference to those suggestions within the policy?
Okay, but what you were saying was you will reference the separate document, but where is that reference to a separate document in your revisions?
Well, we don't have the reference, we could leave it out, and when we have to present our policy, we could explain the end of it to our policy, we also offer suggestions for healthy food.
Oh, we can put the, or we can put that the nurse in each school will provide, request a list of healthy snacks and suggestions.
I believe that may be covered somewhere else in the policy, as far as sharing information. So I feel that it would be addressed.
So, do I understand correctly, after we approve this policy, you must submit it to the state, and they will either accept it as meeting a minimum score or reject it?
No, we were chosen, remember, as a pilot district to go to ride and work on this. So we went during the winter and worked on it. They gave us the guidelines and the rubrics. They're not going to accept it or reject it. We just have to have a new revised policy by a date certain, which is coming up soon, you know, but they're not going to say, "We reject this, you have to do it again."
And will they score it?
They might.
You spoke of a rubric, and you get points for having certain things, but you don't need to get all the points?
No, that was for our own reference to identify areas.
Where we were weak, what we needed to put in.
They gave us a rubric to measure our current policies on health and wellness.
So it's completely voluntary?
It's obviously addressing the regulations is not, but with how we choose to address those in our policy, there's flexibility, we're not going to reject it, we don't like the way that we have it set up. It's more about here are the criteria and how we choose.
Could I recommend, what I would recommend is, since there was confusion on submitting this out, sending this out the first time, that we just make more, you know, take a vote on what you would like to see, and we'll have it at the next meeting for a final approval. You can have three, four readings of a policy, just so that we can, so it's clear, so everyone understands exactly what it is, there's only one document in front of you to approve.
That sounds like a really good idea.
Now, my question is then, and I am in the piece that's in your packet, page four, that's where the first set of additional changes from what was talked about, is that acceptable to the committee? So when we go back and do this, that language will just be removed, will just be removed.
The language that you have highlighted?
That you see in yellow.
That you scored.
That you see in yellow and scored. In other words, that would, that wouldn't be part of the policy.
Okay.
That's what that's saying.
And on page four...
And there's another score up in the, in the middle of the first big paragraph.
Starting with healthy.
Yes.
I'm on page four, and I'm not sure the bullets follow the heading. "The following are exempt from the district nutrition guidelines. School celebrations, including but not limited to birthdays and holidays, may offer alternate food choices." What do you mean, as alternate here, non-healthy, or, in this context, I'm not sure I understand alternate food choices? May, may offer food choices that do not meet the guidelines, or, okay, so maybe we should specify that? Or just, "The following events are exempt, school celebrations, including birthdays and holidays."
Holidays and holidays.
Period.
Yeah.
Right, and then scratch everything after that.
Right, we could actually, because then the next bullet only has a phrase, "After-school concessions and fundraising for sale," so...
Okay, so back to, I'm sorry, back to that first bullet, everything, so it'll just be "School celebrations, including but not limited to birthdays and holidays,"
Right.
For that bullet.
Yep.
And everything else would be stricken, is that correct?
Yep.
And the next bullet is because Deb mentioned, and it's true, we wouldn't want to confuse after-school things.
Right.
We wanted to make it clear.
So they're exempt.
Yep.
Then you go to, I guess you go to page nine. And this is what Jan was discussing.
So everything after nine is...
Everything after the blue, everything after the blue, the citations would be removed.
So then do you want, do you want to go back to page four and lead in the sentence? Because it seems, so, from what I'm hearing, and correct me where I have this wrong, the state has said, "You should have a policy, and the policy should include these components." And when you went to look at the old policy, you said, "The old policy is weak according to that recommendation in these areas," and so that's how this got generated.
Right, this was actually a model policy that was given to us, it was adapted and toned down a little bit, so it would get...
This is the toned down, okay, perfect. So, it seems then that they're almost saying, sort of, in, you know, sort of, what Jan, whose point I think was quite valid, that you don't put advisory in policy, you put policy in policy, and then you may have something attached to that to support it in some way, but they're actually, they were sort of implying that we should have all the advisory stuff in the policy itself?
Well, I think...
Because we're talking about taking it out, which I think is a very reasonable thing to do, but...
I think that could come under the Health Involved Subcommittee, because they are a necessary advisory group, an informational, you know, resource for information for schools. So I think that we could address that issue, or that requirement, through Health Involved Subcommittee, as opposed to being directly within the policy.
Okay. So it seems that if they want an advisory component to the policy of some sort, that you would probably need to leave that sentence in here about recommendations for healthy food choices are provided in the attached healthy snack suggestions, because then it then links the policy to that document, so that if someone's reading it, they'll say, "Okay, well..."
Correct. I think that the most important thing is that there is some guidance available for schools, and so whether it be, you know, directly in the policy or something that serves to the schools.
Right. But, yeah, but I'm sort of looking towards someone who's going to read this from an editorial point of view.
Exactly.
And then...
And that's what I think what Jan was saying, is put something like, "Recommendations for healthy food choices are available with all school nurses," or whatever.
Something like that. We should put that, and then they'll have a place to go for it, you know?
Is that what you...
That would be good.
Satisfy both our masters.
That would be good.
I don't know if the school nurse is the book, but someplace.
Not necessarily in that order.
No.
And in that order?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, recommendations for healthy food choices.
Choices are available where? Where is it going to be available? That's, and that was my question.
The attached healthy snack suggestions and through the school nurses.
Are available through each school nurse.
School nurses like, would like to do that.
I think health educators, it's not necessarily always educators.
And nurses.
Yeah.
School nurses and health educators.
So recommendations for healthy food choices and healthy snack suggestions are available through the health, building health educator?
Sounds good.
Through school nurses.
School nurses.
Just see if, I think, school nurse, and then the help, the gym teacher, the PE teachers can...
Like, who's the help, who's the...
Oh, true, true.
True. Okay.
And they would love to give it out. I know they would.
And they do.
They do, they're very involved. In fact, when I first got this, it was August 2005 when this first came out, healthy schools, healthy kids, when the law was passed, and they came to my house with this, and 10 minutes later, the nurses were there. They wanted to look through it and see what, they were very excited, and that's been that one. I'd like to possibly include the sentence that says, "It is strongly encouraged that celebration activities promote healthy nutrition and physical activity."
Where is?
On page four of 11.
Page four, sort of on bullet, "School celebrating," they obstructed the rest of that paragraph.
Yeah, and actually, at the beginning of that, when we say, "The following are exempt from school celebrations," I would like to add the word occasional, so that if we, if we say, "School celebrations, birthday celebrations are exempt," then we're back to the one birthday party every week.
Right, the word occasional's good. That's a good word. Because it doesn't say exactly what it gives you.
But if we say, "Occasional,"
Yeah, that's good.
Then the, we have some, something to point to when we say, "Well, we like, we prefer to have monthly celebrations for birthdays, because our policy only allows us to occasionally have these kind of treats."
So did that say at the beginning of the law?
But I was saying that...
Yes, occasional school celebrations.
Occasional?
No, no party every Friday with lollipops.
Or limo rides.
It's the long insert drinking milk in the backseat.
No, no limo rides, that's in our incentive program.
Milk and apples, we're good.
Okay, got that page. Now, I hate to go to page nine, but it's on the, we're on the document that Sally and Diane gave us, under birthday recognition.
So...
It's, it's, they're recommending to delete the cupcake language.
But is up above where it says, "Healthy snacks."
Yeah, but that would, that would come out of the document.
Right.
So in the separate document that the nurses would have,
Yes.
That would be removed. And I'm sorry to bring it to your attention, but I just...
Okay, it's...
What's going on?
On page nine.
He's opening up the mini cupcake.
I'm not saying the word.
It's got, it's creeping by.
I'm just referencing the paragraph that it's in.
So we're taking it out?
The proposal would be that.
It's whatever we want.
Whatever you folks would like. The proposal is to remove it in that addendum that the nurses would give out.
Yes.
And just for example, because I'm a multi-sensory teacher, I have to just show why, why I have that in there, because that's, that's a donut, and this is a donut.
Where's the donut hole?
This is mini donut, this is regular.
The donut hole would be a small tree.
Thank you, Mrs. Black, I really appreciate that.
I know we all, we all have a problem with portion size, right?
Beautiful, thank you.
In this country.
What are you doing with those after the meeting?
Could I, could I have the normal one?
So anyway...
Is that real?
It's real, yes.
For the folks at home?
It's real.
Ms. Black, make a picture.
No, no, please. I don't need any more problems.
Okay, so that's coming out on nine, that's coming out up at the top, what else? So then the rest of it is all gone?
The rest of it's separate?
Okay.
Right? The rest of it's going to be passed out by the nurses?
Yes.
In this section.
And for, at our next meeting, you'll have the policy.
With all the changes?
With the changes, and then in your packet, it won't be posted, because it's not part of the policy, but in your packet will be the document that would, the nurses would give out as well. So you'd have the policy and then the document that would be distributed.
Separate. Okay?
Okay.
And, do I have a motion?
No, we're not doing it.
No, we're just... We're not going to approve it.
Giving direction.
We'll just pass this on, okay?
We'll have another reading.
Okay, a third reading?
Third reading.
Okay, thank you.
Get it right.
Thank you. For everybody, for your input, very important. Okay, next one, Mr. Merrick?
Excuse me, I just need a second. The next one is our homeschooling policy.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, Marshall.
We'll give you a copy.
But it's out.
There's reference to serving mini cupcakes
Showing the size.
To, to elementary-age children at a birthday celebration, that that would be a better choice than a large-sized cupcake. We had, had rather a lengthy discussion about it at our last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Available on tape for your viewing pleasure.
That's a nice way, Carol, very diplomatic.
It's still young at that point.
It was, wasn't it? The summer was still young. Anax's policy 1261, homeschooling, they're really...
So on, on this one, I was thinking about some of the comments that were made that day, and actually had an opportunity to talk to some of our other homeschool parents subsequent to that, and the only, 5D, page 12 of 12, where it says, number four, "Homeschooled students may enroll in no more than one core and one non-core." The request was, could it say, "No more than one core and one non-core, or two non-core?" Because we have had students in the past who have done jazz and chorus, or tech ed and chorus, and I know we felt pretty strongly that core, we really needed to try, and we didn't want to go more than one, but that was a request that I had, is if we could change that to say, "Core to non-core."
Curriculum classes, then.
That's fine with me.
What do you guys, I don't think that...
Doesn't change this.
No, that's okay, yeah.
The intent of the policy hasn't been changed at all.
That's good.
And that would be my only...
So you can approve as amended, and we'll...
Anybody else have anything else?
Vote for this one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the policy as amended.
Second. Oh, anybody have any questions? No? Mr. Merrick?
No, I'm okay.
And all those in favor? Okay, good. Grade one enrollment?
Yes, just, again, very quickly, our numbers have, we are now at Pecasa and Ranger School, there are 46 for... School, there are 46 first graders in each first grade, in our two first grades, that's our cap limit, you know, we're, we have 58 students, I'm sorry, 56 students at, I'm sorry, 53 students at Fort Bart, we're 10 over there. So, I'm sorry, it would be 56, I was right the first time. We're 10 students over the cap.
So, what happens is that bubble class, I don't remember, because we've had so many bubble classes-
What happens is-
Does that, does that teacher, will she go to second? Will you hire a new second?
Nor, again, that, the history is the bubble, the teacher follows the bubble.
Okay.
So, if the numbers still hold next year, that person would then move to second grade.
Because they're like A through four, or A through, okay.
Right, and then sometimes, the bubble will then, you know, travel all the way through the system.
And sometimes it goes away.
And sometimes it dissipates.
Like by middle school or high school?
Sometimes, it usually dissipates by the middle school.
Okay.
Because you have more teachers, so you can-
Divide them up more.
You can divide them up more.
Easier.
But for right now, and it's been extreme, even with the construction, it's been, Mrs. Donovan's been taking 12, 13 student parents a day the last two days, for different grade levels, just not elementary, but it's been pretty busy, and I'll have those numbers for you at our next meeting, our total enrollment by grade, so you have all that, so you can see where our numbers look like.
Okay, quarterly budget report, summary?
I'll turn that to Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mrs. Black. Mostly for informational purposes, we include the quarterly report that, that's prepared in conjunction with town treasurer, so we've got, that's exhibit 7A, and I believe it is six pages. Now, if you have any answer on the questions regarding it, but basically, it's a summary of our quarterly town election information through June, combined with the town's information, and then it says to the state in the attempted report, as I've mentioned in the past, is given already heads up if there's any deficit situations, divided the school and municipality.
Could we have, since we seem to be getting that consistently, I wonder if like that, and like the updates, if that wouldn't be the kind of stuff that we would see in correspondence, and then we pull it off if we had a question? Because I think we've got this-
Sure, we can prove, yeah, that's fine.
Like updates, it's sort of just-
It's coming pretty regularly.
And if you have questions, you can pull it out.
If you want to-
Sure.
Because we don't really need action, it's just sort of here, you know?
And historically, we've just put it there, but we can easily put it in correspondence.
I think there's a look, there's a little unusual situation with this, that it's only
submitted by the school committee chair, so Mrs. Black includes it in the package.
I just want everybody to see it.
So, it still can go under correspondence.
Well, then, yeah, because I'm just looking, I know that's what, a lot of this stuff, like updates, and like department updates, reports like that, at least for the council, all go on correspondence, and then if they have a question, they pull it out, rather than having to stop, and, you know?
Yeah, that's a great idea, because the, there's more information on the line item detail by chief of funding.
And it's nice to have, but we don't necessarily need to take action on it?
Understood.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that one? No? The technology plan?
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Natariani. You should have had a sizable packet of information that Al and the tech committee has worked on the last several months, and I'll just let him give the overview, and then he can answer any questions he may have.
So, several occasions throughout the spring, we're required to have a technology-
Al, you gotta put that closer to you.
Put it closer to you.
This is better?
Yeah, it's not. Good, very good.
So, we're required to have a technology plan by the federal government, state providing, and we're required to update it every three years, and file for federal and state funding purposes. We met on several occasions to draft a plan, represented by various constituents east of the district, you can see, beginning pages, was on the committee. PowerPoint today is Minnesota, we planned the talking points, where, where we were kind of coming from, and how we've been developed this, and there's an attached document, it's not part of the plan, it's called the hardware upgrade plan, that I believe is attached with the document. So, some, some of the factors that we really kind of focused in on, in the past discussions, is the age of the existing technology, and as you can see, it's just a brief breakdown here, different in high school, the average age of a classroom PC is seven to eight years old. We do have some newer PCs in the building, however, the vast majority of them are much older. Lab PCs are, on average, five years old, just, those are the same, well, we just bought some, two lab PCs, we bought refurbished ones, which are three years old, they've gone through, and almost like new, but they're, they're three-year-old technology, the same cost, as well as you have to average in some of the older labs, who are still in the building, because that's where you come up with, you know, the idea, lots of those. Different from middle school, again, seventy-eight years old, typical classroom PC. Lab PCs, because of one of the labs being quite older, it brings that average up to six to nine years, depending upon, you know, where you're going in. And at the elementary schools, we're gonna outwell their new buildings, and we're still gonna make new buildings, the technology within this next school, within the next several months, is gonna be both four years old. So, those are some of the initial factors we've had, just at the highway, what was being used, and what we're working. So, these are some of the needs and considerations that I, we discussed as a committee, in terms of how we're gonna figure out, what do we need, and why do we need? Some of the external requirements are RIDE, the biggest one on the list here is PAR, Preparing or Parking and Testing, and having it up in machines, and you will see in your packet this evening, that RIDE has put together a tech readiness tool. It's not really RIDE, it's actually the consortium for PAR, this is, this is a national tool, they're coming out with, across the districts, to kind of decide, all right, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna address the faculty, PAR, this is an online assessment. Two of the other things that kind of derive from RIDE are the instructional management system, and the teacher evaluation system, because now all of our faculty and staff are expected to be able to log into the web portal, and track their students' progress throughout the school year, so, not even just from an instructional standpoint, but just for them tracking the students, hearing a lot more about data and educational talking points, as well as the evaluation system is all online, so, those are external requirements coming out of RIDE. And then one of the other one, I would say, interesting ones, that is particularly concerning to me here, at the middle school and high school, is Microsoft Corporation, having support Windows XP. We have approximately 1,000 computers in the district. Over the summer, you'll see in one of the other packets, some of the technology, some of the updates, this is the, we upgraded all of the elementary computers to Windows 7, because those are newer operating system, and Microsoft's been continuing to support, but the vast majority of the PCs here at the high school and middle school are running Windows XP. Based on the age of that hardware right now, we're not sure how many of them we can upgrade to Windows 7, if we don't think functionality is gonna be viable to use in the classroom. Right now, some of these machines are sold, they can't do the attendant time, or take more than a minute of machines, so, those are these considerations from an external perspective. Internally, the biggest one's instruction, what are we doing with the technologies, how are we gonna integrate to instruction? And in your packet, you're gonna see the standards, which I think are both for the maintenance supplement, back from the digital literacy standards for technology integration, and they're outlined from A through 12, so you can certainly, if you have any questions. Attendance, attendance is now electronic, it is a mandated report on a daily basis from RIDE, they shared with the Department of Health, if we recall the flu concerns we had a few years ago, the Department of Health and the Commissioner of Education, they've got together and mandated that attendance be done on a daily basis, and the only thing has to be submitted by, I believe, 10:00 AM every morning, so, it has to be done electronically in order to get it all based on time schedule of the schools. Third thing is community, communication. IQ, which tracks the attendance, parents can log in to see child's attendance, high grade book for the high school and middle school level, where parents can log in to see how their students are doing, whether they're keeping up with their homework, keeping up with tests and quizzes, and how they're doing, and then class and teacher pages. In order for teachers to be able to do these functions, and go up with them, you need to make sure they have viable equipment in the classroom, in order for them to do these functions, and for parents to be able to communicate. And then, lastly, is web-based assessments, maybe becoming more and more prevalent here in the district. This summer, we replaced some specialized software, and all of this is now web-based, and that, that factors in the web-based assessments, but based software, so, those are more or less of the driving consideration, and why we developed this plan. And briefly summarize, there are required five goals in order to meet the objectives. Some of them are potentially ongoing, you're gonna see them make required plans, they will always be going forward, objectives that we need to have, some of the newer ones, on the goal one, our goals, a realistic strategy to use telecommunications and information technology, is looking at a student information system, that is the heart, all of our reporting there in the district, and in the next few years, they're gonna be linking some of the recording data out of the student information system, and they're gonna be linking what we're reporting in the financial system, if we go, so we can make sure that we're being accurate, and we're able to collect all the required data, and report it to RIDE without any type of manipulation of the data, because they're looking for us to be able to upload it electronically and automatically, which helps intervention and less necessary. One of the things on communications within the school community, is we're now looking, we'll be releasing some kind of small, a mobile app, that parents and guardians can be able to use from their phones, so that they can access their students' grades and attendance, as well as a mobile app for smartphones, tablets, devices, so that they can access the website, and get the news feed, so they can see some of the headlines as a news feed, so those are two additions on the communication. We're also looking to make improvements in our live meeting centers, bringing some e-readers for digital reading devices, you know, aside from just being, just in role effects, we'd like to kind of supplement the libraries with that. On the professional development strategies, we're gonna, again, continue to try and look at seeing what we can provide in-house, we do a lot of training in-house, we have around 1,000 days, technology is integrated in some of those opportunities, and we're looking to see how we can expand beyond that. We do offer after-school training throughout the year, certain key functions or software packages here in the district, specifically, each week, we'll be offering one, September, October, for those teachers who want their pressure upgraded, last page. Goal three is basic inventory, it's a very basic inventory of what hardware we have in our buildings now, and what, so, where, and that basically.
And this information was also part of what we sent to RIDE when we did our tech readiness, correct?
Yeah. We've uploaded our computer count, now that we've finished upgrading to Windows 7 at the elementary level, we update the report with RIDE in the next couple of weeks, and then they will produce a readiness report to us, to let us know where our perceived weaknesses are, in order for us to address them, so we're ready for PAR, you know, not gonna protect it from our tests. You'll see that we reference the software upgrade and hardware replacement schedule, which is the exact case. Under goal four, we have some rough numbers, RIDE, this is just a big proposal, so they're not necessarily, we're gonna hold you to, but this, you're telling RIDE, this is what your plan is, this is what you want to do. Goal five, an ongoing evaluation process, we meet, the council administration team meets several times a month, we certainly have discussions about technology, technology committee, individual members and small groups meet periodically, give up suggestions, so you wanna continue to monitor and see where we're at, and see if we can improve it. And the last goal is development plan across the community engagement, we have worked over at the community college, we've received donations from that start, we're gonna be talking with the city libraries, see if they can give us a system in terms of after-school programming, I know they're, they're running programs right now, here to sign and talk with them over there, they're planning to run a program here, so, it has worked out quite well, and we do solicit donations on a regular basis, and we look for minimum specifications, minimum specifications posted on our website, so that people that wanna donate equipment know that this is what we'll accept, that we'll work with our system, and it will be something of value to the district, that we think, you know, is a good plan. This plan also ties into the wireless classroom initiative, that is ongoing, I mean, going to meetings on a weekly basis, our proposals are now being, they are free to all vendors, we're in the process of reviewing, and then once we have recommendations, we'll run forward against them. You will then get to pick from it based on recommendations for what facilities I need to provide wireless here in the buildings, and RIDE has an entire rubric that will be outlined, brought to you once RIDE gives us the instructions of how we need to proceed with the school.
So, Al, just, where are we with the wireless?
The wireless, all three?
We've submitted our proposal to RIDE, under the wireless initiative.
The proposals were, in our P through, Department of Administration-
Yep.
Vendors came out, did site surveys here in the district, they submitted their proposals to RIDE, RIDE has given me positive approval. We opened them at RIDE, but they're, we can't share them publicly yet, they're still considered a working document, until they come up with the rubric, to tell us how we score them. Once we do that, I need to say with Mr. Fiore and Mr. Rehrich, to review the proposals. Our main concern as a district is to make sure that it will allow us to have wireless capability in all of the buildings. They're telling us that they've got money to wire up all five buildings for wireless. I tend to think, in my opinion, based on the meetings I've attended, that they've also asked us to select, select priority schools, so, our priority schools are the high school and middle school here, they will be done first.
We have no wireless, what do we have for wireless?
We have a limited wireless, so, for example, we have wireless here in the buildings, but-
All buildings or just the high school and the middle?
All buildings have a certain amount, the middle school has the least amount of wireless access points, but the wireless that RIDE is talking about, is wireless specs for the bid proposal, we require the manager to provide a solution that would allow every student to walk into a classroom with a wireless device infused. If we recall, RIDE also brought that golden laptop, case the district's wanting by laptop for the students, so, so they're trying to provide the capability for us to have wireless in every classroom, and have multiple wireless devices that we, we so chose, but, we're not at that point yet, where we're at now, us internally, is we could have a limited number of wireless devices, but too many would overload.
They're funding that?
They're funding that.
There's a $20 million grant that they got from the General Assembly, that's supposed to take care of the entire state, and that's why it's important, Al serves on the statewide committee, and is right there when they're having all these conversations, so, what RIDE will do is they will then submit plans back to us, that we'll have to look at, that is, they'll say, "We'll do this, this, or this for you and Tiburon," and then we would have to decide, you know, what we wanted to do, based on what they're gonna give us for funding for, so, we're still waiting to, as Al said, we're still waiting to hear for that, but the upgrade on the wireless, it would be significant, it would be similar to go into a large hotspot, where everybody can use multiple devices, I mean, we're, and that's why we put off buying any lap, you know, iPads or anything like that in large numbers, because we don't have, that capacity simply isn't there yet, and hopefully through RIDE, that will give us more capacity than we certainly have right now.
It also says in here, "You looking for grants?"
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the elementary library, and we're gonna need a couple of these, or what grants we can give them as well.
Okay, thank you.
What, in order, because Al's given us a lot of information here, and the committee did a lot of work, we, we as a district, and I'm recommending that the committee, unless there's changes, approve the first document that has the six goals, so we can submit it to RIDE, as our working document to work off of. If it doesn't commit us to, the dollars are just, you know, what we hope to do. You know, we do have, you know, internet access, we do pay for Al and Greg, you know, when you saw that $400,000 number, most of that's already covered in our budget, the only thing that we would have to work on is what you see in the second document, are the, what it would actually cost us.
Do they need this by a specific deadline?
No. I think by the 23rd of September, it has to be-
Because while I looked at it, I didn't look at it with that kind of- Because while I looked at it, I didn't look at it with that kind of-
We can bring it back if you would.
I mean, I don't look like anybody else did. I just didn't look at it thinking I'm going to have to approve it to send it to Ride. I didn't look at it with that kind of eye, but maybe I don't, I don't know if anyone else did.
There didn't seem to be anything that really tied us-
To it anyway.
To things that we couldn't-
When I read it, I didn't see it as committing us to it.
I mean, I did look, as I said, I did read through it.
Excuse me, we split it up so that the funding piece, the actual hardware costs, our refrigerated hardware, software upgrade plan, so that we can get this submitted to Ride-
Right.
And then it can be a more robust discussion about-
That. The budget.
And what the technology committee would like, what their recommendations, how, what the school community would fund, you know, where, you know, where these pieces should be placed.
So this is really just general?
What we're asking for approval is, yes.
Not the budget.
Not the budget.
The general goals.
Well, just, it's just that first, where the goals are. It ends there.
Now, goal three is this assessment, and yet what follows, it appears that you already have completed that because you have a list of all your, of the hardware, or is there some-
It's an assessment of what we have.
Right, so it's an inventory, and that's been done. So that was goal three and that's been done?
Goal three is to do an assessment of what you have.
Yes.
And is complete? Goal three is complete, thank you.
And then Ride takes that data and then, based on what the vendor said, and then they'll come back with something to us.
Get all 20 million.
Yeah, Tibbeton gets all 20 million. Yeah, I'm sure we do.
So on page eight of 16, you mentioned security. Could you talk a little bit about the security, like if everyone's going to be bringing in their own things eventually, what are we going to know they're looking at?
Well, with security with wireless devices, since it's addressed, we had this discussion today with faculty at the middle school.
Where is that first?
Where is it?
Page, uh, page, page eight.
Eight of what section? It's not in the section I'm in.
Oh, I'm, it's page 16, I don't know which one.
Oh, page 16?
I just wrote it down, yeah.
Huh?
Which section is it in? I don't know. Department of Ed, budget, digital literacy. I just wrote it on the front.
So it's page?
I'm looking at her tab. Yeah.
I think it might be a-
No, she wrote it down.
I just wrote it down. Okay, go ahead.
It's tech readiness.
Tech readiness. Right, at this point right now, based on the limited wireless access we have in the buildings and without any of the proper backend equipment to make sure things are secure and that we can overload the system, we don't allow faculty to have their students to bring in wireless devices unless we do provide ones based on special needs. With this wireless protocol from the state, if they put that in place, the way RFP was designed, the way the building specs were designed, we were done for all schools that participated in this program to be able to allow individuals, if the district so chose, to bring in their personal devices, called BYOD, bring their own device. That would be an option that we could explore going forward. That would be an option we could explore going forward. We're not, at that point, we're not ready for it yet. But once the state comes through and we are able to put this wireless system in, we can then explore it as a potential option.
But we're not there yet.
Which is why we have to discuss.
Yeah, but I would imagine they've been addressed because there's a lot of that already going on, not only state by, but country, nationwide. And they addressed the security and kind of what they've been doing is they, whoever can bring in their own device brings it in and then they supplement for those who can't. But you can't do it without a reliable wireless.
Ride has developed a, in order to reduce the liability on Ride, they have made the recommendations, they won't tell you if you require, have specific policy recommendations, but we did have a discussion as the advisory board for the wireless classroom initiative. It's been recommended through the technology director association, it's come up with policies. We have a very good policy in place. If we were to fall in that direction, there are certain recommendations that I would avoid, there are certain concerns, fire protection. Most, the most important concern I have is the data, and all of this data is security of the data, you know. What is going to be put on a personal laptop as a confidential, projected on a twelve-bar hitler? So those would be things that we have to flush out once we're ready to discuss that. We're really not at that point until we get the wireless in place. But we are having incremental discussions and we will, once I see that Ride is starting to make, make sending checks out, starting to-
Yeah, what's the timing of that, for them?
Unofficially, I figure they're going to stop funding by December because this grant ends by 2000, all these classrooms by law, the general subject has to have this done by June 30th, 2015.
So December of 2013, they're going to start?
I was told by one person at Ride unofficially that they thought they were going to be cutting checks by then. But that's not an official-
I think Ride's biggest issue is how they're going to divvy up the money. Based on the need of the state. That's going to be the, without even sitting in on the meetings, that's going to be their biggest issue.
That's what they're going through. They've had a huge rubric, rating, spreadsheet and plugging numbers in. We're the first district to open the RRP. We were the first district, they told me when I arrived the other day, realizing we were the first ones.
So that means first in line.
So they're telling us that we're the first on the ladder, we're one of the first districts because we got all of our support submitted, we were the first to open our proposals. I don't go by lockback, assuming it's a courtesy, because the other members of the committee were also, and the other districts were allowed to come in after that. So I know some districts did not apply to do the wireless, they just did their forms in, so I'm thinking that's the best that was, because of the-
All right, so I, I'm going to have some questions then on this tech plan based upon what you just said to that, but what do you need, Bill? You need-
Just the approval of the-
The goals?
The goals.
Okay.
If we're anticipating having wireless in our buildings, when you replace staff computers, your plan calls for replacing staff PCs, would you replace them with laptops?
If you look at the hardware upgrade plan, which is the second pack that you have, the technology-
That was one of my questions as well.
The technology committee developed very strongly, definitely the teachers, that we move in the direction of laptops. Now that the price of laptops has gone down to the point where you buy one almost for the same price as a desktop, they actually brought some very, those arguments to the discussion in terms of they would reduce electricity consumption because monitors take up more power than a laptop.
They also can do more work in more places. They can get the, yeah.
Yes, so that was one of the sessions. Even we did get the wireless, they, I said, you know, there's a chance we may not, because we started discussing this, you know, we're still in process at Ride and weren't sure where it was going to go. They still built very strongly to acquire them because if nothing else, while they're in the classroom, they can plug them, at the elementary level at least, they can plug them directly into the projectors and use them around, towards where we moved around. Here at the high school, we actually can see a slightly smaller footprint because we've provided classroom computer in every classroom. And based on the rooms, including offices, where they provide an old sort of computer in the office for the department heads and the different offices here, I think we're going to come up with two less devices. We gave each faculty member at the high school a laptop versus replacing all the desktops in every room. So that was one, that was very much the data, Mr. Gandhi was on, claiming to, to rank these sections.
Well, all right, so I have some questions, I guess, about the second section, but you need the approval of the goals.
For tonight, we need the, we would like the goals approved.
So that's pages one through?
That first section.
Yes, one through 14, that first section that you have. Beginning with technology plan, request for review form, and then ending with page 14.
I'll make a motion that we approve the first section, including the goals.
Okay. Can I just ask page 10?
Sure.
What kind of budget?
Yeah.
Does that-
It does not, we're not required to-
Well, but let's go through the, we can do that quick, that's what I was saying before. Salaries we already pay for. We already pay for internet access. We already pay for supplies. We already pay for licenses. The only thing we don't right now, the big question mark, is replacements.
Yeah, it's all hard.
Right, so this isn't, when you first look at it, you go, holy cow, it's $406,000.
But it's not.
But it's not new dollars. The new dollars are really the replacement, the capital improvement.
Just for example-
And again, we're not bound to it. It's just, this is what we hope to do, it's a plan.
You lay on staff personnel?
Yeah.
Have we changed this, I mean, you can lay on staff personnel. So these, these are proposed as to what you would do to meet these goals. During the last technology plan, we had a proposal, and I don't recall what the numbers were, and some of them we could meet, we could meet the target, but we still, they're still in there. It doesn't mean that we proved this, that we have to do these numbers.
Okay, because I was trying to basically tie that out to the budget and some of them tie it, some of them don't, but it doesn't matter. Okay. All right.
None of it matters till the reference.
Any other questions?
The first part.
Every district I've worked in-
You know I like to tie out, not the question.
And you worked all day today and we don't want to make it harder than it is.
Every district I've worked for, that's been a discussion and it's the same thing, it's just a recommendation, you know, or not so.
Yeah, which is fine, I was just trying to tie this out to your recommendation in the second section and it didn't quite tie-
Because the second section is really, it's really the capital.
Well, yes, I was looking to tie out the hardware replacement lines.
And that's really a conversation for another night. Because we might, we might be doing this for a couple of meetings.
Right.
Because it's extensive.
Yeah.
And we don't, you know, and it's something to consider is, and I told Al this, I said, the committee did great work and they framed it out for us and as to what we need to do over the next two or three years, but we can't really do anything until we have the project in the back, the giant sand pit, you know, finished. Right now, it looks like we're going to come in where the estimate was. Right now, there's only one work change and that was to, one change order, and that was to pump out the back there with a sewer company, you know, pumping guy, tanks. So that's really the only extra that we've seen so far. So it looks like, cross our fingers, that 650,000 will be the number. And then you can digest that with what Doug will tell you later about where we are financially. And then this will make, I think you'll have more information-
You want to approve the first section and then next time we'll look at the budget?
I think we just bring it back as, for a further discussion, but we'll look at the budget piece of it.
Okay, so I have more questions. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And thank you for all that hard work. Appreciate it.
Okay.
That's all my questions, bud. Of course, and we're glad to have you here for that.
And while we have technology on the table, we'll let Al just briefly talk about what the tech department did over the summer, kind of their summer vacation.
Both of these are normal process. We go through updating, touching on PCs. One of the new things we shared, we loaded Windows 7 on all the elementary school computers, a little bit of adjustment for our staff, but I think we've come on to the point where most people have some exposure to Windows 7. I have very many concerns as of yet. Access service, network, nation, the wire, and all they do. Again, with all the new state reporting, what goes into that, we've rolled forward all the different applications for the new school year, and we'll be done tomorrow, but pretty much that, that will take place. So it's the staff that's coming back in, they're seeing, they're logging in, checking to see if the student posters are there and they can access the grading, the attendance for the first day and whatnot. Again, I just, I'll go in briefly, during the summer, we have our calls to be here, state reports, in particular, the 1016, the one, the one important one, at the end of the year, it's ADN ADA because it drives the state, should I check it, Doug? Or I always have questions. The beginning of the state reporting is already started, that's how the district labels and going for, that's how the teacher evaluation system, how we know what students are sent to work for, so what instructor, name of district. We'll be finalizing our re-rate forms for the prior fiscal year and I'll be starting to prep and finally, coming for the fiscal year. Website class cases, we've uploaded the new templates, the teachers have been arrived back, they've been asking questions. I know we're starting to load the welcome messages, we'll be offering a refresh course in September, October for those teachers, so on, eventually the website adds new utilities. I've spoken with Mr. Cazette and Carson, the City of Education Foundation, grant awards, and we're doing some preparations for that, and Steve and Al will do that. Security system, patching the systems, they had to make sure that they're recording properly, catching all the video, there's no pauses right in there. And then the last piece is just, we did our, not even just a quick summary of the number of work tickets we've processed through the last school year.
Can you just explain to the committee what a work ticket is, Al?
Definitely, other than a large project, so we have projects throughout the year, something they have in, or we need to install software in multiple groups, not those that the district, but an everyday issue, whether it's not, forgotten your password, your computer won't turn on, monitor doesn't work, somebody broke the keyboard, we need help, somebody's helping us get your report, they can't print, ink is low, whatever. There's a multitude of issues that could come into the district. Every staff member is required to submit a work ticket. It's how we track what we're doing, it's how I track where we're at, if I see things cropping up in a particular area, I can say, okay, something's weird going on at this school, why is everyone in this wing not able to print? Something's going on. So these are a breakdown of tickets throughout the district, I broke it down by building. You can see that the largest numbers come from middle school and high school. We're seeing some large numbers out of the elementary schools as well now, as the ticket systems being more localized here in Tanero. I've seen the numbers, I believe they've slightly increased from the last school year. So it's just a quick breakdown, but there's a very, very thick detailed report that I thought-
Do you monitor response time?
I look at response time.
It's on the tickets.
So it'll tell me, you know, password reset should happen within the same day. One of the factors is trying to educate the staff in the buildings, a lot of times it happens as a teacher, and I can certainly appreciate why, they've got a good time, but they might log into a ticket, put three items on the ticket, and it's going to be something simple, we can fix right away, but then that third item might be, I'd like to have my projector moved along.
So you can't close the ticket because it's got-
So, yeah, so I reviewed with Greg and there are some tickets where if I look at it and I'll say, wow, that took three weeks, why? And if I look, it might be a partner's on order, it was on back order, didn't come in for two and a half weeks, or they wanted something that we just can't do now. One of the flaws I see with that ticket system is, is they allow us to put it to subcategories. So when something comes in, I look at it, it says it's a Lee, it's a Greg, it's a Sherry, or there's something secretary at the building, kind of a certain function they do, their technology related. And I'll put it in a different category and assign to a person. If it's waiting for funding, or if it's a part-time order, that's where you tend to see, if something had a status change into one of those containers, you tend to see that it took long to get it done. And that's generally the reason why, and again, like I said, you know, you might get three issues on one ticket. The staff have been much better of trying to stick to one issue, one ticket, which is a better reflection of how fast we-
And how long does it take you to open a ticket? We have the system at work, so that's why I ask.
You a school do?
For instance, we could have a ticket where I say, I can't hook up to the network printer and they don't open it for two hours, so I'm sitting there and I can't print for two hours. So that's one of the things I know in our office, we're working on is response to opening. You might not be able to do anything but see the ticket.
If you put in a ticket, your staff member, you put in a ticket, we, I have it set up so that it sends an email alert, so you don't necessarily have to be in the, there's a dashboard that you can-
Right, so you, so somebody opens it up immediately, pretty much.
I see all the tickets. A lot of times I tell the staff-
What if you're not there?
Greg gets an email as well. And he has access to the dashboard as well as Sherry does. I, we use the dashboard, I need to do the review in the morning. Greg and I meet in the morning, usually every morning, say, okay, what are the tickets? Where are we at? What's the status, parts come in? Sometimes the end of the day, but we usually try and need every day. But in order to improve the response time, we don't have, we don't wait for us to log in and look at the dashboard, get an email that comes in. I tell the staff that because a lot of times, you know, they might leave a note and I'll say to them, you know, it's actually quicker than leaving a note by door, it's actually quicker to put the ticket, because if I'm in another building, I'll see the email. And if it's something urgent, then you say, right now, I'm doing this and my whole thing crashed and the whole class is sitting here, myself a break, and you can come back and say, okay, we'll help you, but it's a learning curve there.
Yeah, it took our office a while to get you to work.
And the teachers are getting better because instinctively, we've always been taught, or at least I was, go to your department head, go to your principal.
Well, or you send an email.
You know, something's broken, I need it fixed. And now, you know, everyone's getting better at making those requests.
I can tell staff, this is sometimes, if you're not sure if it's a ticket issue, send me an email. If it's a ticket issue, I'll say, put a ticket in. Now I'll call Greg and I'll say, hey, heads up, the ticket's coming in on this, we're going to have to look at it. Well, they'll catch me in the hallway, now a lot of times they'll say, hey, Al, here's my problem, I know I'm going to have to put a ticket in, but just so you have a heads up, here's what it is, so you know it's coming. And I'll say, okay, thank you, that's good, and we follow. We also have the maintenance ticket system that we ran through last year, we're starting to build on that one as well.
That's been very helpful.[1694.08]
In my school, the building maintenance, because you'll be in a lab and you either have no fresh air intake, or it's 30-degree air coming in, and I can send a ticket, and 15 seconds later, the air gets shut off or gets on because somebody's opened it and flipped a switch.
We can't respond to that for us.
Here's your goal!
We might not even have the capability to do that, never mind.
The tickets get opened and flipped.
What it is, is close the window.
You'll get it tomorrow.
This is a lab with no windows.
No, we can't. We don't have that capability.
That's your goal!
That's a goal.
15-second response time.
There you go.
Jesus. That's lofty goals.
Well, maybe it's a minute, but it's very quick.
It's faster than we are, Al. Al, continue.
Oh, I think that more of my summarize is.
Oh, okay.
It's never adding. It did okay this summer. You know, today I had a call, one of the, one of the security cameras.
Just killing, I'll put it to. Education. The summer maintenance report.
I'll make this very brief.
Okay.
As you can see, we looked at the security offices in the school and high school, regarding any issues or concerns there. They will be completed, I've told them they'll be completed by the end of the week. Safety control, you have an update on fire sprinkler system, I believe that.
We got the green light today.
The inspector came today, I saw him, we shook hands, said, we're done. So sprinklers are in, ready to go.
It's at the middle school and the high school, that's, it was for the shop areas.
The wood shop, yeah.
Carpet cleaning was done, all the buildings, the indoor cleaning has been completed, all the buildings have been cleaned currently. I think they're just catching up on windows now over any days. Externally, they've gone out and done an excellent job in terms of the grass, meeting, they mulch here. They've done some painting projects, we could go here at the high school. They've done some mulching at the elementary schools as well. They've done quite well with what they've had, we've had several guys.
Seven guys out, so that's good.
They've done a very, very good job, they've stayed late, they've been very good. Building mechanical plumbing inspections, we conducted an inspection for Mr. Ames, I think that's the electrician's name. There's electrical inspector, the building mechanical plumbing inspector. We did the walkthroughs, we'll see if we patched or below. This is the actual report I sent back to the building principal's office or the enforcement office. We took pictures before and after, and I just outlined, you know, what we did, made sure we tracked the situation. Fire inspection for Donna, there's nothing concerning the maintenance model in the buildings. I conducted the security walkthrough with the police chief. And the last item, which I don't have more to, at this time, other than doing the prices for the boiler replacement, the preparation there from our electrician, which we contacted National Grid, which I did. They're coming out on the 6th of September to do a walkthrough of all five buildings. I had an initial meeting with them. They looked at our electrical consumption, they, I think it was the elementary level, I don't know what we were running there, do we have a fully conditioned, you know, what kind of energy we're using there, is it oil, gas, you know, whatever? So they're gonna do a full review of all five buildings, in particular, attention to high school, middle school, for light fixtures. They feel that based on the initial review, that there's some recommendations they could make that would allow us to save money in the long run. And once I get the report back from them, I'll be with Mr. Jory, Mr. Greer, the electrician. And I think we'll be visiting, I think some of them will come, but it's still preliminary, they still have to do their actual walkthrough. I think that's all.
Now, the security walkthrough, we did it with Chief Blakey and with Chief Lloyd. Our plans have been approved, and we submitted them to the police and fire. They've been approved, and the principals have them, and they've been reviewed with the staffs. So we're all set to go. And again, that's also another ride initiative, but we've been, we were doing that well before they made it a requirement.
So thank you to everybody, all the custodians, they did such a good job, everything worked so nice, you know, shorthanded.
I just want to make sure that we thank Mr. Luteryani, who is wearing two hats to deal with technology and with maintenance. At that time, when there's all of this reporting and planning, it's quite a task. It's just incredible how you can do this all.
We are fortunate that he was able to do that, both jobs, quite well.
Okay, then your three-year facilities?
Yes. I talked to Deb a couple months ago, or a month ago, I can't remember when. She asked, she thought it would be a good idea if we put something together that we could have for when we meet with the budget committee, with that joint meeting. So what we did was Al and I talked to the principals, went around the schools, and did a breakdown, I did it just for three years, of really the major things that we, that we see. And this isn't a professional study, this is just based on what people are telling us, getting prices for them. These are real prices, we costed everything out in today's dollars. So obviously, when you see paving in three, in the third year, it might be more than that number. But for the sake of discussion purposes, and again, they, these weren't done in any order, I just blocked them for you, and they could be moved around in any sequence. But in the first year, or some of the things that we're looking at, we're looking at, the big picture items are the boilers. We brought a company in to give us an estimate. The high school boilers are 50 years old, or close to 50. The element, middle school's 37, 38 years old. They both need to be replaced, both the primary and auxiliaries. And based on the estimate that the gentleman gave us, and again, we didn't bid it, so could be lower, a little lower, a little higher. But you're looking at $900,000 per school, per unit. And that's just for the boilers. That's not, we didn't have people go through in great detail to look at the actual syst, you know, the heating vents, things of that nature. This was strictly, because the boilers are old, and I'll just leave it at that. And we fire them up every year and cross our fingers and hope for the best. But at some point, they're gonna need to be replaced in the not-so-distant future. The middle school needs lockers, I think very desperately. I got that priced out over a two-year window. They would run about $35,000 total. We're in the process, if you look at the first block, install a security lobby near main entrance of the high school. We're already in the process of doing that. So instead of 14, 15, we're gonna do that this year. But everything else, one of the things that Chief Blakey recommended was install exit alarms on all exterior doors. That's when you go into a business or whatever, says, do not enter, you know, alarm will sound. He thought that would be a good idea to put on all our doors that go to the exterior, that we can't monitor, that we can't see. So if the, it wouldn't go to the fire station, it would just be an alarm to let us know someone had exited the building or was trying to enter the building. So that's where those recommendations that, for those, came from. And the rest, for those of you who've been in the buildings, you know, sound systems in the auditorium. We did have lighting here and in the auditorium, but since National Grid's gonna come in and do the audit, we took that out for right now. And again, you know, something as simple as AC in the library at Fort Barton, we don't have anything there right now. We would need to put a unit on the roof so we could take care of Fort Barton. And the rest is, you know, and the other big item is the parking lots, you know, on the outside. A facility study, they would look at our windows, they would look at the roofs, we know the middle school.
That's what, you mentioned roofs, we have active leaks in the high school.
We do have active, we just haven't had time.
And they're not on here.
Well, we hadn't had time to get people out.
To look at those, yeah.
I mean, we'll still try to get estimates on it, but we have leaks at the middle school. And this, you know, and we need to probably redo them as well at some point.
Because like the boilers and the roofs kind of are gonna have to come.
Right.
Before carpeting, I mean, to replace this carpet when we still have active leaks.
The bigger point is, the bigger question is, is the total cost. You're looking at costs that we can't hold in our budget.
Right, and talking to the budget committee about where we start.
And just to let them know, say, hey, we don't know how to fund it. We also will be getting electrical, you know, from National Grid, and we'll also be getting, you know, we'll get an additional, we'll have someone look at the roofs. But we don't.
Yeah, can we, can we just maybe put a footnote that this does not, we know that the roofs, two of the roofs.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, just to denote it, to denote it. And again, this, this is strictly, you know, a lot of it, we can tell, the smaller stuff, we can take care of, you know, over a two or three-year window.
Okay, it's gonna be the roofs and boilers.
But it's the roofs, the boilers that give you sticker shop. When, when the price came in for the boilers, I was like, really?
Yeah.
I mean, just for the boilers, it's expensive stuff, so.
But it's kind of like, I mean, we may have to approach it like we did the sewer system, that it's a have-to, and you start putting money aside.
Right, now the question, you know, one of the things we would need to talk to, and we haven't really defined it yet, is do we want a true facility study? You know, do we still want to bring in an expert?
I thought we had budgeted.
We haven't spent it, we haven't done anything because of our back.
We wanted to wait for the sewer.
We've waited for the sewer project.
Yeah.
So I would be in favor of doing that, so you, again, someone from the outside could say, that's just the school department's wish list.
Because we kind of need to bring this, and.
And Al's plan.
And we need to bring the technology, just so they.
Just so they can see it.
They get a good look at, here are the capital issues.
Right, here are big issues.
Never mind budget, here are the capital issues.
Right, and to say, you know, this is what we're looking at. And I think that was the point of the meeting, just to give them, you know, a heads up as to where we are. And, you know, I think this is a pretty accurate, you know, thing from.
2.5 of the 2.8 is parking lots and boilers, so everything else is sort of like.
Right, the big ticket, the big ticket stuff, and that's. And some of this will be in our budget next year, for example, the lockers, the alarms. You know, I would even recommend we can, we talk about it at least, maybe later on, once we know what our budget situation is. Because some of this, we can start chipping away at right away, if the committee wants to. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Now, again, I want to thank Al, because he helped a great deal with me in compiling this data and getting everybody here.
Okay, music stipends, Mr. Greer?
Yes, you have a request from Mrs. Mullen, requesting music stipends, I just need to find my page, for four after-school activities that are currently, or before school, depending on which one we're looking at, for stipends. One for middle school travel chorus, one for high school select, one for elementary chorus, and one for high school. And I'd just like, for the committee, so that they, that they know, the high school orchestra, for example, while they're, they're currently, they, there's nothing for someone to work with them after school, we do have a middle school orchestra stipend.
Oh, I, that was one of my questions, I do have some questions.
We do, we do have that, and we do pay 15, up to $1,500.
So that's not listed here.
That's not listed. And something to consider is if the middle school, if someone, the orchestra person is, we need a new one, is doing the middle school, how would they be able to, you know, make that work? Plus, you'd be really doubling the stipend, currently they get 1,500. This proposal would give them another.
So that's what it is currently, 1,500?
1,500. The element, I'm sorry, and the high school select chorus, we really never approved as a body, and it's more of a club, the teacher.
So that.
Took that on by themselves.
That's not part of the curriculum, it's sort of just a new chorus that was started.
That's my understanding.
For students who didn't want to or couldn't participate in the school-based chorus.
That's correct, with our regular chorus, that's my understanding.
So it's sort of a club chorus for students who don't take chorus as a class.
Yeah, that's correct. And elementary, I'm sorry, yeah, elementary orchestra, we've, Mrs. Bond.
Didn't somebody mention that last time?
My understanding was the elementary orchestra, those lessons happen before regular school hours, but that teacher didn't have a longer day, just started earlier and ended earlier.
I believe on three of the five days, that's correct.
And so.
It's just part of their day, it just changed, my understanding is, instead of starting at nine, they start at eight and leave a little earlier.
Yeah, because we talk about consistency, I know that when we added the stipends for jazz and middle school band, those rehearsals are for all of the students in the group, and they take place every day after school? I mean, certainly the high school level, they take place every day after school.
I can, I know for certain the high school.
And the, you're understanding the middle school too?
I think Jen, oh, she's not here. I want to say at least three days after school. But she does, she runs it very similar to Mike's program, where she stays after school to do sectionals.
Well, I think we need a clarification in terms of how this relates to the duties for which the people are already paid for. So if this is with hand, if this is just a shift in someone's day, but they are paid for the hours, then the question, what, this is something extra. What is this extra?
The extra for the select chorus would be meeting with children after school, but it.
But it's not, it's not an extension of the curriculum, it's like a club.
No, it's, yes, I was gonna get, I was gonna say that, that's okay. And the high school orchestra, the person is already doing.
Getting.
Is already getting a stipend, but working with the middle school orchestra.
What's the travel chorus?
Right, middle school travel chorus, that, is that again, sort of like a, like the select chorus at the high school, kind of a club thing? It's not all the students who participate and who get extra help after school?
So it's not like Mike or Jen or Gail giving after-school lessons to the kids who take it during the day? It's like a separate, I guess I'm not sure what it is.
Did you find it?
I know you probably don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's after school, they do them after school, I didn't have to.
But is it, is it the after-school of the kids who are in chorus? Is it just, is it like after-school lessons?
For.
Maybe someone in the audience.
Yeah.
Renee, wanna come up?
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Wanna come up, Renee?
No, you want to come up, please, Renee, so that you're on tape?
So we can hear you, so we could hear you. Thank you.
If I have things correctly, the travel chorus is middle school chorus students, but who have auditioned and who have put forward the commitment to stay after school. And they go around the community, and they have been to various senior citizen centers, many places around town. So chorus is regular during the day, these are the students who want to go above and beyond, who want to do more.
So it's not open to every chorus student?
Right, it's by audition only?
I'm not sure if she has them, this is something we're gonna have to ask Ms. Bergeron, if they audition, but they have to commit to, in other words, you can't, you know, say, I'm gonna come one week, I'm not gonna come the next week. They commit to it, and they work on a higher level of difficulty with music. I know the high school select chorus is the same way. They work above and beyond.
Although, so your understanding is that the students who participate in the class-based chorus during the day at the high school are not singing at the same level as students who are just part of this after-school club at the high school?
The difference being that anybody can join chorus, and certain people can get themselves to a certain level. A group can be brought to a certain level. But another group that is striving harder, is doing more, I mean, they just want to do more. These are the kids who eat, sleep, drink.
And are we talking middle school or high school now?
Both, I think.
You have.
This is those kids who want to do more than just the general group.
Right, we offer school, and it's a full-time class, and they're, and now we're comparing this to students who love to sing, but who rehearse a couple times after school. And I'm confused as to why the students who are not in the class, but are doing it as a club, you feel are much more advanced and much more committed than the students who take chorus as a high school class? But since you don't run the program, we're probably.
I think we have to probably table it or do something with this, until we have further information, how this relates to the responsibilities.
Yeah, because I, I guess, part of, part of us offering a curriculum is that, for instance, the concerts are an extension of that curriculum.
That's correct.
So is everyone at the concerts, or are we limiting it to only certain kids? Because it really, it's an extension of what they're doing during the day, it's to show, so I don't really know how. I guess Jan's right, I, we need more information.
If I could speak to it, everyone is at the concerts, all of the groups.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if you spoke directly with the person who's in charge of the chorus, no offense.
Sure, oh, no, none taken.
And I think we also need to discuss, for, when we offer a stipend, how many hours we expect of after-school work? Because I know, I work in a middle school, and my music teachers go to competitions on weekends, and they have after-school rehearsals and performances, and they say, that's part of our job. We don't take home 120 essays on the weekend to grade. We have weekends at times and evening concerts we come to. So in my mind, if you're a music teacher, a certain number of after-school rehearsals to prepare for a concert, and some evening concerts are sort of part of the expected effort. When you go beyond that, and, you know, Mr. Al certainly does, every day after school, he's with the, with the concert band or marching band, and several evenings a week, he's with the jazz band, then that's what we were looking to recognize with the stipends. So we need that discussion about how many additional hours, how many days a week, how many students you're working with.
I think we need to differentiate too, what's part of the curriculum and what's a club. Because honestly, we have a lot of clubs that we do not.
Pay for.
Pay for. And I know, for instance, Mr. Swords does an enormous amount of work outside of.
Well, that's the bigger question.
With the Portuguese club, he takes them to history, he takes them to places to do history, he does fundraising. So it's kind of like, what's curriculum, what's the hours, what's a club? What's a club versus...
An extension of a course that we offer?
This is also part of the teacher evaluations, am I right? What kind of other activities do you have which contributes to educating students?
They could be considered, some of them, yes.
There was that component.
Now, we approve all clubs. Did these two come before us?
I'd have to go back and look it up. I don't recall, but my memory's not what it used to be. My memory isn't what it is. And if it's a club, the, I think, before you get, even getting into defining what, who does what, is we do have clubs, the bigger question, that aren't paid for, that we do not pay stipends to. You need to, I believe you need to answer that question first before...
So what's curriculum? What's a club? Type of deal?
Well, you're opening up a door.
Right.
And betting it be, it's better served than negotiations.
But like orchestra, orchestra, that is part of the, that's for after-school curriculum courses. But like you said, we already pay.
That's correct, we already do.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm, I, not, it's not a valid conversation, but I think it's bigger picture. I'm not sure, it's up to the committee on how you want to proceed, but...
Could I speak briefly?
The three things we need to know are, how does the activity articulate with the curriculum as it already stands? How does the participation of the teacher articulate with their duties as they're already defined as part of their employment? And then, what are all the other activities that we have that could be, you know, we give stipends for ten of, but there is fifty others? I think, as you pointed out, that could be an issue of negotiation ultimately, or sort of people say, "Well, you're not being fair to me under the contract."
I just think it's something you need to consider, how you want to, I mean...
So can you come back with more information, I guess?
I can, I can come back with more information. I can have those people that do these things certainly come and speak to them.
Say what they can.
And then you can take it from there.
I think from all these voices, we have to, we are walking on a very thin ice, because all of a sudden, like everyone said, can be an avalanche of requests, "Why not me? Why not me?" And we have to define, like what you said.
Yeah.
Basically, what are the criteria for being paid stipends?
You also have a question of, if it turns out that they are clubs and we didn't approve them.
Right.
Not that what they're doing is necessarily not a good thing, but, you know, we never approved it subsequently, there was no stipend ever attached, you know?
And I mean, some of these contractual stipends, and some of the stipen, I mean, this is probably a good starting point for our next negotiation. Some of them probably need to be looked at, reduced, increased, eliminated. I mean, so, I mean, obviously, we can't do anything about the contractual ones, but...
In the short term, you mean?
In the short term, right.
So I can provide a brief summary of what each activity entails.
Could I possibly clarify something for you?
Sure.
Going back to what Mrs. Herman said about Mike Alves and all of the things that he does, not taking away anything from somebody I think is one of the hardest-working people in the school system. He does receive above and beyond his pay about five different stipends. One of them is band director. There's one for choral director, so we wondered, why isn't there one for string director?
Because it was never negotiated.
Because it was never negotiated.
That's what we need to know, is what are the, what are the stipends we're paying now? How does each of those activities?
Right, what is the workload associated with them?
The answer is they've never been negotiated.
And didn't I just hear there was an orchestra stipend?
There is.
There is.
That we've been...
That we've been paying.
There's one for fifth and sixth grade meeting one day a week after school at the middle school.
I don't know what it was for, but I...
We pay up to fifteen hundred dollars per year.
Fifteen hundred dollar stipend for orchestra.
For a middle school orchestra.
Just a spreadsheet of all the different activities and those that were paid stipends for.
Well, except that we're not going to be able to, I mean, we can do that, but there's some that are contractual that we just can't change.
Right, but with that information...
It's easier, it's easier to provide a list of what isn't paid.
Yeah.
Because we have the contract, what is contracted.
And like I said, I'm looking at some of the contractual ones, thinking, mm, that could be gone, that could, that's...
Right, but if we have that information, I think it is helpful so that when we are in the cycle to renegotiate the contract, we could say, "Well, this is an outlier, and we want this out of the contract."
Or we want it, or we want that.
And these we want, yeah. And this was overlooked in the past, and we need to switch these out, or something like that.
All right, so I think...
I think we need to know what we're paying now, what's contractual, what's not contractual.
What's contractual, what's not contractual? What's curriculum-based, what's just a club?
Do you have any questions? Questions about...
Is your schedule, as long as you're up, you start early but you leave early?
The issue for me is, yes, because I start early. The only compensation I've ever received for doing elementary is that I'm able to leave a little bit earlier. But my, my issue...
So but that's compensation, because your schedule is seven hours, but it's seven hours, it's a shift. So you're saying you don't do that?
What I'm saying is, for elementary music, elementary art, the elementary librarian, we all teach the exact same amount of classes. However, three days a week, I teach string orchestra. So I'm teaching a bigger workload, and it's more than just teaching three extra classes. I'm running an entire program.
So you do not leave early on those days?
On those three days, I do leave earlier, but I'm there at 7:30 in the morning for elementary level. So I'm not...
So you, so on those days, you have like a high school schedule?
Sort of, yeah, I guess. If that's what time they meet.
They start at seven.
Yep, they start at seven, and I'm...
It's a shift in work hours.
That's not...
Yeah, but I'm, as again, it's for zero pay, an entire program. Ten years ago, when I took the elementary position, they tried to have someone do middle school and high school, string orchestra and fourth grade. It did not work, and they asked me, "Hey, would you do, would you do the fourth grade string orchestra for us?" And I said, "Sure." And that was about ten years ago.
See, I remember, I was at that meeting. I recall the program was eliminated, fourth grade strings, and there was a huge discussion about if you eliminate that fourth grade strings program, you kill the program. And I confirm this with Mike Burke, because he was on the committee. There was, there was a discussion of that if you'll do it, they'll change your schedule, which they did. So I guess I'm confused as to why you're saying you're not getting paid when you are, because you're working the same amount of hours that you would, you're just shifting it on those days. You're still working the, you're getting paid for seven hours, it's just you work from, you just shift an hour earlier. So I guess I'm not, I'm not following why it's not compensated. It would be like, if I had an eight to three workday and I worked seven to two, it's the same amount of hours, the same pay.
But the only reason I'm doing that is to run an entire program, to connect three schools.
But you're getting paid to run the program.
But if we, but if we didn't run the program, you wouldn't be working full-time.
That's, yeah, that's, I guess what I...
No, I would be, because I would be teaching exactly what the art teacher teaches, I would be teaching exactly what the librarian teaches at the elementary level, I would be teaching the exact same amount of classes.
We're getting too personal with the children.
Yeah, I think, I think what we really need to look at is, what are all, what's the penalty of being...
I believe, that's fine, but I believe you're going down, slipping down, because it's going to get into what Mrs. Bond's talking about. Well, we're talking about loads, and we're talking about this, and this teacher teaches that, and all those things, that's really negotiations. It's not whether or not someone's working extra hours to do that, you know, club.
Well, because we have a lot of people who work extra hours.
And I just, I just, I ask that you maybe just put it off for a meeting, and then if you want me to bring it back, I can, but that's up to you. I just, I don't see how the next conversation, it will be better or clearer.
So would you say...
So your recommendation is not to add these stipends at this point?
I'm asking it right now that we, we just don't take any action right now. This was a request from the union, and after giving it more thought, I just think we need to, we need to think about it some more. That doesn't mean we can't bring it back in another month. I just want, I'm just asking that you guys take some time as a committee, individually think about it, and if you want it back on, I'll place it back on, and I get that information for you, okay? I'm not saying we don't talk about it. I just want you to consider where we're going.
Yeah, I think ultimately, my thoughts will have to be informed by data.
Yeah, and we can, and I can get that to you like any other information request.
Yeah, got it.
But it opens up, I think I'm hearing, a much bigger issue that is really...
I think it could.
That's contractual.
Right, because you get into comparing apples and oranges.
That's what I'm concerned with. And maybe there's a way around it, and we can find it, and that's fine. I'm just thinking, just give it some thought.
We could reopen the contract.
That's something that I can, would have to talk about.
I think it's wise to just leave it until contract negotiations, that's part of...
I'm not even saying wait that long, I don't mean to interrupt you, Jan, but I'm just saying, just give it a second.
Okay.
And table it for now, or...
I'll make a motion to table...
When it's done.
Music stipends.
The request.
The request for music stipends.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
High school cafeteria bid/award?
Yes, Jan, I'm sorry, Doug is passing now.
Yeah, I can hear you too much.
It's the, it's the goatee is distracting me, of that European actor. This is for the collapsing folding door that we have currently in our high school cafeteria.
This is one of the capital items that the committee had given us permission to go out and bid, and we had bid over a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, I was very pleased with one of the bids, it came in for less than half of what we had allocated, and almost half of what the other bid was, so...
Wow.
The reason it's a little late, and I apologize, we were checking references because the bid was so low, just to make sure.
It's too good to be true.
It's actually going to get exactly the same.
That is the right length.
There you go, that. We weren't buying half of it, or whatever.
We weren't buying half of something that was going to get done.
So we did, we did have three successful reference checks today, so I'm recommending that the load bidder, who is CRF Interior Systems from Daville, Connecticut, we awarded the bid to replace our high school cafeteria closure.
I have a question about how we solicited bids. I read here that we solicited through a newspaper advertisement in Providence Sunday Journal. And just as, you know, our teaching staff, we now use School Spring, we don't advertise in the Sunday Journal, I'm wondering if these kind of bids, is there now a different way that they're usually advertised? Because the classifieds in the projo are not what they once were.
I agree with you. Right now, we have a procurement policy that requires me to do that, but I would be in favor of reviewing the policy to not only with that item, but other items.
Oh, we would, the policy subcommittee would certainly be happy to look into that. If you feel that we would get more bids through a different method, absolutely.
Frankly, though, I'm surprised that, we do get a decent response rate, because the journal, either online or hard copy, is so widely circulated. We had a very successful bid with the wastewater treatment plan through advertising in the journal. Maybe we should look at, you know, items over a certain threshold, that we want to spend money, because you're right, it is expensive doing the ads in the Sunday paper. But generally, we do get a pretty good response.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve that bid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Before they change their mind.
Do I have any questions? Can I talk, ask about how it works?
Sure, there's a picture, actually.
I saw the picture, but...
It's the center one? Does it come down, or does it come down?
No, this one goes to the side.
System S-126, or?
It's the middle one or...
It's not the one that comes down like you see in the malls, but that was a little higher price.
That's awful.
More prone to break, so we got the simple...
So it's see-through?
Yes.
It has openings?
And the price, the bid price was $6,728.
Oh, well, that's better, that's a little better.
We're going to give tourists, the public, a charge, so they can see how the food's made.
Which includes removal of the existing...
Can we spray it gold?
No pictures will be allowed during the tours.
I think that's an option, it's black, we didn't include that in the bid.
It's really, the middle one's okay, the other two are just atrocious.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from CRF Interior Systems.
I think we, the motion and the seconds, all right.
You need to vote on it.
Any questions?
I'm looking at the picture.
I tell them not to overload the committee.
Okay, all those in favor? Yeah, you were looking at the picture very diligently, thank you.
What is my house?
Oh, no.
My kitchen.
Fun balance, Mr. Fiore, fun balance.
Yes, thank you. Item 7H in your package is a summary which kind of encapsulates thirteen or fourteen months of our activity. So I'll briefly take the committee to it. We're at a point now where we closed out our 2013 year, and we have some pretty solid numbers to base our projection for our fund balance. So if you look at the top of the page, we start with the audited number from the end of fiscal year 2012, which was $810,470. And then I've adjusted items that we either know about or have voted since then to get an estimate of where we currently see them. The first item on there you see is our operating results from the past fiscal year, which is $38,311, which reduces our balance. And the reason it reduces our balance, we, within that number, we've had some, a lot of one-time expenses, or actually two that were approved by the committee, the computer and computer labs, which totaled $137,840. So that number is, is one of the reasons why that number isn't a positive number, but a negative number for 2013. And we've talked about that a couple of times during the year. The next item we see is these additional funds that I'm requesting that we reserve for the wastewater improvements, and I believe my memo covers that. We, last year, just to go back to the prior page, I'm sorry, 7H, I should have started there, we reserved $400,000 for our wastewater treatment project. When the bid came in, we, we were over that amount, and I had contemplated increasing our reserve amount to cover that, and I have before you a formal recommendation to reserve another $288,056 from our unspent balance to cover the project in total. And we can, we can come back to that in a minute. Going back to the items, and we've, two meetings ago, we talked about how we're going to pay for that, and that was basically going to be funded through the additional state aid that you see on the next line of the analysis, which is almost a one-for-one offset of the additional cost on the wastewater treatment facility. The next item we see that wasn't originally in our budget was the item Mr. Rarick referred to earlier in the evening. Because of our higher enrollment numbers, we're looking to add one first grade teacher for Barton, so I've estimated the cost of that, the benefits, at $99,999. And the final item we see, adjusting our balance, is the capital items previously approved by the school committee of $107,688, and there's an itemized list of those toward the bottom of the page. So my estimate through the last fiscal year and all the other items the committee has approved is going to be $563,942, which you see projected on reserve fund balance.
So Doug, the capital items previously approved, those were capital items that we approved to come out of fund balance that weren't in our FY313 or FY14.
Or any operating...
That's correct.
So those are the one-time items that we've been bringing before.
Which we've been trying to do.
They want some...
And can I just, how did you get to the 38,311? When I'm looking at balance of 409,945...
That's a great question, I knew you were going to ask that.
All righty, because I get 99,529, and if you subtract...
I wish it was that good, but what the, what the line item summary does not include is accruals, and I should have probably labeled...
It doesn't include the what?
The accruals. So we have, it's mostly a payroll accrual at the end of the year. The report you're looking at...
So you have roughly about $300,000 in accruals that aren't on this?
That's correct. And that's a little high, but because of the way the payroll fell this year, we have more accruals. It's predominantly our last payroll of the year.
Just trying to keep you on your toes?
He puts those in there, so you'll...
Just to see if I'm...
Just like we do with Carol in our...
You have the accruals, and you have the 107...
So the accruals is mainly payroll?
Yes, and a couple of special ones that are... Three quarters of the accrual, as it usually is. Three quarters of the accrual, as it usually is this payroll benefit.
So you get from four oh nine down to about ninety-nine, is where, and then you subtract the one thirty-seven, you get the negative thirty-eight, okay?
So the, the action item that I'm requesting is to, to formally reserve the additional funds necessary for the wastewater treatment facility of two hundred eighty-eight thousand fifty-six dollars. And I got to that number by adding the exact amount of the contract plus a five percent contingency, which Mr. Smith recommended as being a pretty prudent amount based on the size of the project. And if we don't need it, we can just go back to our zero fund balance.
I move that we approve that.
Second.
Any questions?
Just have one other. Weren't there some capital expenditures for hardware, uh, computer hardware?
That's included in the computers and computer lab number. You see, it's part of the hundred thirty-seven eight, eight forty, right in the middle of the page.
Oh.
It's, it's right below the one nine six.
That was, that was our biggest expense that we, in the past fiscal year, that wasn't included in the budget.
So where is that?
It's buried, that's the Mrs. Hollis's question.
It's in the negative thirty-eight three eleven. It's, it's buried in there.
See, I have a little asterisk that says includes one-time capital purchases, which include computer labs and auditorium seats.
So if you take the fund balance of roughly ninety-nine thousand and you subtract that, you get to the negative thirty-eight three eleven?
It's confusing because that number's larger than the negative number just right. I, I included it in the operating results for purposes of this report.
Alright, all those in favor?
Thank you. Now, that, so our balance, assuming everything goes according to plan with the wastewater treatment, is that number, the five sixty-three? They, so keep that, so now it's in context with, you know, the tech plan and things that will be taught in facilities.
If for five months from the article, well, that's the estimate of the number.
You guys have half a boiler?
Well, it gives us-
On one parking lot.
Well, it's, it's not much.
And, and, and plus you need to keep some in reserve period. I mean, it's what, one point nine six percent, I think?
Out of the whole budget.
Out of the whole budget, so, yeah, you're right, it gives us half a boiler.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore, for all your good work.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
Actuals, you do that?
That we kind of covered that. That's the seven I, the three-page summary through January. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I was pretty pleased with, with the way the year, year ended, despite having those capital expenditures in there. We were, we ended a little more favorable than I thought.
Doug, this is something you would like in correspondence, right? For the future.
No, no, this is fine.
This is okay.
But like the one that comes from the town really-
Okay, got it, okay. Just, we're gonna-
I had, yeah, I had a couple of questions. Three from the bottom, professional development and training. We, we've talked about how we do not spend enough on professional development, and yet of the twenty-two thousand dollars we earmarked for, we only spent thirty-eight hundred, sixteen point seven percent.
That's, that number is the-
That line item also includes contractual-
That number, it's not teacher PD, it, it's contractual PD for administrators and myself.
Okay. Do we have a different line for teacher PD? Yeah.
Besides our title one monies.
Or do the PDs just come out in salaries?
I did break it out in the new budget, I don't believe, it may not be in-
Alright, so that's what, it's not teacher PD?
No.
Although you guys, administrators must need PD.
They do. They, it's contractual. They, they ask for it.
Too busy doing evaluations last year. So PD right now is really just in salaries, it's just payment.
And indirectly through subsidies.
And indirectly through some of the other ones.
And our title one monies.
And then we have four items that seem to all relate to sped, although we do also have the RTI. We didn't spend any of the fifteen thousand that we'd allocated for RTI support team, and the sped dietiticians, therapists, and physical therapists. I mean, we, so, does that fluctuate so much year to year that we have to budget thirty-five thousand even though we may not use it at all?
When I look at the sped, the, the answer is yes, it does change significantly from year to year, because a lot of these expenses pertain to children that are out of district and they have varying needs, and if they change their service provider during the year, it could change where the expense rolls up for the year. What I do is I, I look at all the sped costs in totality, and we did have a favorable year, so if you buy about a hundred thousand dollars, so if you add up all the items that I've labeled as sped, we did have favorability, but the way that I've gotta present it for the chart of accounts, sometimes it's confusing because we do have some big fluctuations.
It does fluctuate.
If you were to look at other accounts, you can see offsets that almost, you know, equal out in total.
But, but you're saying we, we spend a hundred thousand dollars less than, than we had budgeted. I realize that you have to, I mean, we have to pay for these costs, and so in some sense you have to be prepared for increased costs.
The savings of, the majority of the savings were in tuitions, out-of-district tuitions.
So that's good news.
That's good news.
That's why I was pleased with the overall.
But what we don't do is, we don't say to the committee, hey, we have an extra fifty thousand or whatever, because inevitably, over the course of the school year-
But you never know.
That tuition number fluctuates. So the fact that we actually came in under, it was a really good year. It's not a, it's not a-
Right, but it could just easily have been over.
That's correct.
So when it goes into the district and, and-
Yes.
Close you out.
Okay, thank you.
On page three, technology-related supplies.
Surprise.
We made money?
What line item?
Oh, yeah, I, above the bold eighty-eight point sevens.
Which one is it?
It was a negative fifty-eight seventy-four.
That's 'cause you-
Yeah.
It's like right before the bold supplies, Doug.
I think we might've been a little too ambitious in transferring the expenses that were out of that account. And what probably happened is that it's ending, it's in the computer lab accounts, which you can see the ones that are over budget under technology, but I, but I can't think of that.
Can you tell I made money?
Unfortunately-
You've been using that photocopy?
So it's probably down in hardware?
Yes.
Okay. And like athletic supplies, some of these, I'm surprised not to see them spent down to nothing. Athletic supplies, library, software, like, are, are they given a, basically a, here's what's left in your account so that they know?
They can ask at any point during the year.
They can ask, but we don't necessarily, well, because there's too many people to supply.
And we didn't freeze the budget?
Generally, we freeze the expenses partially through the year, so whatever's out there at that time is generally what you see as a balance at the end of the year.
Right.
Unless there's extenuating circumstances.
But people who control those budgets, like Bob in A D, A D-
I'm just surprised to see that.
They have access to that constantly.
But they can ask.
But they get it. They, they, they monitor it. They're watching it monthly.
Right, but if you've frozen it, so say you've placed your book orders and you have one more to place, and the budget is frozen, then you just lose your seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
That's correct.
So you'd have a thousand left over, but you really couldn't spend it.
Right. It's not that you didn't wanna spend it.
We've been very consistent doing that, though, so the, the folks in charge of the budgets know to get the stuff in.
To get it in and get it there. They know to encumber their funds on September first.
Okay, that was what I-
Actually, athletic supplies is a good example. Mr. Murray knew he had some funds not only there, but in his transportation, so he approached me at the end of the year about replacing the backstop at the middle school, and that's what we did. So, I mean, we try to have some flexibility when we know we're gonna-
So that may be in the accruals?
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause I just, like I said, I, I would think they would be right on, but I understand if you freeze it, it looks like they may not have spent it, but it's not because they didn't want to. Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Newport County Mentor. As you know, Tiverton's part of the Newport County Mentor program, and it's professionals, students, public officials, and educators working together to develop programs to enhance student opportunities on their career paths. And this summer, we had three students go to Raytheon, and we'll have them at SOS, the ones that can come. Mr. Rarick will arrange it in Elaine, in our SOS in September. But when we were at our meeting at the Newport County Mentor, they said two students from each high school would be eligible to go to Raytheon for a program to build a rocket and everything. It was an amazing experience. So I said, if somebody doesn't go from another school, can we have three? And they said, yes, so we got three students. So that was very exciting. And then we went to the International Yachting School, this, in Newport, and they have one also in Bristol. And I look at, I was looking at Rhode Island Magazine, and they had the best high schools and everything, and then you see Not Your Daddy's Voke Ed. And in here, when you go through it, I'm just reading through it, and all of a sudden, look, do I see Mr. Phillips, Coach Phillips, with his boat building kids? And it was amazing. They were, they graduated down from Iris, and it's an amazing program. And so we'll have them too if they can come. And so Linda and I also went to a Fab Lab, Makers and Shakers, and it's the new advanced manufacturing, and they tell you the different jobs you can get and how much money you can make. And if Linda can come up and talk about the thing that we saw that made, they took a half hour to make this thing in the computer, and it came out, and it was round, and it was so nice. And I said, oh, I could spray that gold and make a napkin ring out of that. And the boy was so upset, he said, I love it the way it is. And I said, I'm so sorry, you're an artist, of course you do, but Linda will explain to you, it is quite amazing.
I had the, I had the pleasure of going on a field trip this summer with Sally, and we found a student to come with us just in case they needed to translate for us. But Fab Newport, along with the International Yacht Restoration, held free sessions, and their focus was three D printing and development. Fab Newport is developing an MIT-inspired Fab Lab at the Florence Gray Center in Newport. So it, it kind of twofold, is we kind of found out about some different career paths and things that were available, but we also got to witness the three D printing of the Maker Bart Replicator two X, which is this fabulous three D printer that does all kinds of things. And the Tiverton Education Foundation was actually in the process of purchasing one with the technology grant that we received. So we were able to see that in action. We were also be able to, we were also able to meet with some fabulous people who were just, how can we help you? Is really the response that we got. And in creation of this Fab Lab, what they're also willing to do at some point is, now that we have this three D, or will have it shortly here in our building, is maybe come down here and do a free workshop for us as well as our students. And our students will also be available to attend in Newport at the Florence Gray Center at any time, and work with the computers to do three D as, yeah, two D as well as three D printing and design. They'll also be able to do electronics programming, and they'll also be able to do digital fabrication with the three D printers. They'll be able to use Ubuntu programming and software, and they hope to get a vinyl cutter as well. So they wanna develop it into an AS two twenty like they have, the lab that they have in Providence, so just some great opportunities that, that we were able to, you know, to attend for nothing.
And then the next day, we went to the beach because we knew that the kids wouldn't come to a career fair, so we went to them. So we went to the second beach, and they had all the people there to talk about different careers in medicine and all the things. And that's when Linda and I were talking about the Career Tech Day that we should have.
We did, we, we did go to the beach on day two. We found a student, Diane Santa came along with us. It wasn't the normal suspects of, of course, C C R I was there and those kinds of institutions.
It was a career fair?
It was an actual career fair, and we were able to talk to folks from Go Newport, Screw Tool and Die Manufacturers. There was a manufacturer that made surgical instruments and equipment, and the different kinds of career paths and things that was available in their different industries. So kind of the spin-off of that day was maybe we should have a career fair here, kind of separate from our college fair, because there's really students that might not attend a college fair, but they'll attend a career fair and vice versa. So not only to bring C C R I in with the rehabilitative sciences and things like that, but also to bring these independent businesses in, to actually talk to the students, and maybe even bring it down to seventh and eighth grade as to what is out there, what's available, what kinds of career paths. Because even in Go Newport, you might think hospitality, restaurants, hotels, no. Graphic arts, graphic designs, transportation, marketing. She's looking for a graphic designer. She, you know, she was asking our student, who's very tall for his age, if he was available, but unfortunately, he has to be in bed by nine, so that was, that didn't work out. So we would, obviously, I, I haven't even spoke to the Tiverton Education Foundation Board or anyone really around the table. This is just an idea that's brewing of maybe having a career in tech fair here, maybe sometime in March or April. That would be separate from the college, college fair.
And we had one of those a few years ago. Remember, Mr. Rarick, Sheila Kaufman did it, along with Rebecca Elwell, and they had the construction guys, the pipe fitters, electricians, and we could have the fire chief and the police chief, and it was just an amazing night, so.
We, we did have a piping company here yesterday that donated a pipe for our tech ed department with a three D printer. They wanna build some boats, and they wanna use the pipe as a canal with water and have races and fans and, I don't even know what else they're gonna test down there. So I approached him as well to say, hey, would you come to our career fair? And, you know, I mean, it would be open to anyone, any local businesses. I talked to the fire chief the other night, how do you become a fireman? Well, you don't just become a fireman, you have to become an E N T, a paramedic, cardiac certification, those kinds of things, but even just where to go and the kinds of avenues and places, and, you know, that, you know, things that are available.
The actual mixed idea, it means tough at the amount of times we're supposed to graduate with the college, and you have to find a job, where then to see where there are jobs. And what are the types of people?
Yeah.
Are you volunteering to run it?
We're, we're throwing this idea around, so I'm sure someone will step up and, you know, it's, it, there are people out there that are willing, we just have to say, you know, we want you, please come, and I think it'd be great opportunities for our students.
Can I read, I thought I read an article that said it was interesting because they, at this, I didn't realize it was a career fair, but at the second beach, the beach thing, that they were talking more about soft skills.
Oh, yes, they always talk about soft skills. Every time they meet us, they wanna talk about-
Knock reads, knock testing.
No, no, getting kids ready, there on time and all that.
Not finding the correct multiple choice answer?
No.
From both, both events that we tended, I can tell you, on the curriculum side of things, everything was about geometry, and on the other side, it was soft skills.
Right.
And that's what they're looking for. They're looking for those kinds of skills when that, whoever walks in the door.
But soft skills are only valued, there are hard skills which are dressed in soft skills. So that's basically-
So anyway, it's real-
But some people still have hard skills and not the soft skills when they're off the door.
Absolutely. No, I said it's, it's necessary, but you have to have something else to offer, not just-
And I know we've talked about it many times, and everyone might not go to a four-year college, but everyone needs credentialing beyond high school, so that's what we're looking for.
So we improve like this.
So, it was great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Be exposing.
Mr. Rarick?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was talking to Dr. Lark, Mr. Pecandi. Yes. We had our teacher orientation day today, went very well. Tomorrow's our PD day for all our teachers, and Thursday is our first day of school. And we'll set, open the doors and start a new school year, so. It's hard to believe it came very quickly this year.
Anybody else have any announcements, Mr. Fazan?
Yeah, I was trying to give us a real group update on our revenue to get our seniors throughout risk, to get the ACT, CAT, evaluation requirement, what we've been trying to do this kind of spring. Well, some of the meetings we had last, uh, late spring. After July 1st, unfortunately, it looked like by ECC that we were unable to offer the ACT, first testing to us here, which picks up from representative from ECC, looking for further, we were told by their testing department, they were paying for the patient to have contracted, let us have these high schools to utilize their performance that way. So that obviously put us in line, so we called back a couple of weeks, Linda Wilson and myself, trying to see that we had actually contracted them, a little, you know, brought us or whatnot, and that also was not really possible. So, we, that went on to public, some communication of this, colleges, vacations, things like that, so.
We turned then to CCRI recently, because we had, we were going to do this along with Department of Education. When we talked to the representative from CCRI, they informed us that RIDE will not allow them to give any seniors who are solely taking the ACT place or to bank a score that test until February. So, they were very helpful to us, obviously. So, we're still not going to give up, we're still trying to find an avenue to get our kids a bank score. So I'm meeting with a representative tomorrow from Boston. They're a testing agency that's contracted through the College Board. They give the test on vocational and to ECC. There will be these involved, we haven't discussed course yet, we can discuss what the program would be, but we're trying to make every effort to get these kids bank scores. Obviously, there's some other things going on where the kneecap seems to be the primary score that someone wants before the ACT place or gets put into play. And I think when we left here last summer, it was our intent, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we wanted to try to soften the stress and the impact on our students' career situation.
Absolutely.
If in actuality, RIDE is saying that they can't bank an ACT place or score. So, that's still the avenue we're pursuing, it's not, it is truly a bumpy road. There have been changes in RIDE's policy, and then we're going to talk a new bill, because now we can have a waiver policy to this that can be developed. They've just taken the growth model out of the evaluation, these are all major issues. I will not be too pleased if somewhere down the road six months from now, if this gets renewed with all the work that we're doing to try to take care of these kids. So, that's the update.
I'll jump onto that. Policy Subcommittee, that is just one of my, we, we need to get on that waiver like as soon as possible, because I want, because RIDE does change everything, something every other week, that I want at least have a policy that we can say, here's our policy as soon as possible to our, to our parents.
That would be good.
And that really makes me angry, because they just came out in public on tape, in article after article after article, saying that you can bank scores, yet they're telling the one organization.
In this state, yeah.
Then the state that gives this test, don't give it to them. That is so frustrating.
But, but remember, RIDE is also saying you can bank it, but you have to take it.
I know, but.
Obviously, it helps the child, if the parents know they have the score in their pocket, but, so to speak, but they're still making them take it. They still, this October, will have to take it, even if they do have the SAT score, some way we're able to get the ACT place or.
Well, they're saying you have to take it, except that there's a parent from West Warwick who has said, I'm opting my child out, and they said, okay. They can't fight with the parent. They have a bank score from an SAT, and she has said, my child will not be taking the kneecap, and if you do not graduate him, they will see a lawsuit, because it's the parent who has said, you can tell him he has to take it, but I'm the parent, he has a score that qualifies.
Right.
I'm opting him out. So, I mean, we can't do that.
Right.
But parents are starting to do that throughout the state, and it is frustrating, because like Steve said, so much is changing. It's like, one week you hear one thing, and another week you hear another, but the best we can do is have our waiver process.
It can all go based on the best information available.
I hope they don't come back and say, that's not going to be there, but, I mean, we have to at least start.
Well, that came out in the early summer, that it would be up to the districts in the end.